We usually like to have one of our young leaders say a couple of words. So today, we're going to start with Mr. Brandon Johnson to talk about...
Hello, my name is Brandon and I'm seven years old and I'm in Vallejo. Here are the three basic economic needs: food, clothing, and shelter.
Food, clothing, and shelter. Alright, thank you. So today, we actually do it a little bit differently. I don't know if it's just me, but I do want to say I'm very proud to actually have Congressman here. This is somebody that I support, that I endorse. He does some amazing work in our community. And I think it's always important to hear things not just from a city level, but also from a federal level. For me, as a council member, getting an opportunity to work with Congressman Thompson and work with Supervisor Henry has really been a very educational experience. We can't do it wrong, so take everybody. So I would like to introduce Congressman Thompson, Mike Thompson. Say a few words and then we can take some questions.
Well, thank you all for coming out. And I'll probably thank you for inviting me. I think my team is a great guy and he's doing good work. And I was going to talk about this when you asked about it. Absolutely, I'd be happy to do it. And I'm a member of the community. I think it's a big thanks of small honor and the need here. And Brandon, you did a great job. And I gotta tell you, I heard a story from someone today. His mom. She said when he was in preschool, his preschool teacher told him that he was probably, told his mom, he was probably going to go up to be a politician. After seeing you today, I think you might be up here answering questions. Good job. But it's a pleasure to meet you here. When we first started, I think our team said we should talk a little bit about gun violence. But we've worked a lot on that in Washington, our sheriff has worked on that. And I can tell you a little bit about it. You know, there's too much gun violence, we see a lot of victims. It's a tragic, tragic thing. I've been doing this since the tragedy in Sandy Island, where 20 young students and six educators were killed. And for seven years now, I've been working on my thing, what many of us in California and with 90%, over 90% of American people think. And over 80% of NRA members think. Some pretty common sense, low hanging fruit. And there's background checks for anybody who's got a background. We'll take after the background check before we go back. For six and a half years, we couldn't get a hearing on that of him and Congress. House of Representatives. Last year, Democrats won the House. And the first thing we did is we passed my bill, which already requires every gun transfer to be accompanied by a background check. Of course, we see you in the pipeline to make sure that you're not in danger of yourselves or the Congress. That bill passed as the first piece of gun violence prevention legislation passed the House of Representatives in 25 years. It's over the Senate and it's being held up in the Senate by the Senate Theater of the Congress. And if you all followed the news, you know that that's not really news. Because every major piece of legislation that we have passed in the House is tied up in the Senate. And there's been some great bills that we passed on it. Not only the gun violence prevention, but part of the gun violence prevention, the reauthorization of the Violence Against Women's Act. H.R. wanted to deal with corruption in government, campaign financing performed in government. The DACA, the Dream Act, that would allow DACA student, DACA individual students and individuals, kids who are Barack, United States, America, who grew up here, educated in our school, played sports with our kids, went to church with our families. Everybody's American, is any of us. And they're protected by this provision that President Obama put on books that this president wants to repeal. And so we passed legislation to deal with healthcare, the cost of healthcare in our country. It's probably the number one issue, a critical, key part of our country. And we passed a major legislation. One, if you know the backstory, you know that we passed, the last time that we got from Georgia, we passed the fourth era that ensured that millions of people on the healthcare rolls, that they purchase healthcare. It's been revealed, we're trying to repeal it ever since. And one of the provisions in that is that you cannot be a student for healthcare without a previous condition. And for you young folks here, we may not think much about the previous condition. And if you're my age, anybody who's my age, does have previous conditions. And when you can't get insurance because of that, it's just what you want. We passed legislation to make sure that you could not be, get off of your insurance or price out of it to be able to find insurance because of the previous condition. We passed major legislation to reduce the cost of prescription drugs for the biggest drivers in healthcare cost, cost, cost. So we've done some major legislative work in Congress. And it all sits over in the Senate. And it's ironic to me that we've heard a lot from critics who say, "Well, they're not doing anything with the Senate because you guys are doing this in each area in Florida." And we're trying to do anything. And that's just our hard help and rock. The fact is, McConnell, right after the election, the Democrats won the House. He said, "I would not be the chairman of the Senate. No House bill will get out of the Senate until almost on air." So this has nothing at all to do with the impeachment of the Florida State Legislature. And I probably feel that I didn't just add in. I had it, but immediately before this, I had meeting my Solano County Student Leader Council and they asked about the impeachment. And you know, and to kind of boil it down to just basic terms, there was a credible charge brought against this president. And brought from Congress and the Massachusetts Senate. It was our constitutional duty to do the work of this. And it was by some outlier, by some Trump, it wasn't by some clearly supported there. It was by a person within the Intelligence Community that saw or heard about something that wasn't right and turned it in, who's the Intelligence Community Inspector General. This is a Trump appointee. This was reviewed by the Intelligence Community Inspector General, who said, "Yes, it's sort of in Trump." And then that is what led to the intelligence. And that's what we're having a hearing on right now. And having the public scoundrel in the hearings, Robert Davis missed, Art Moonford, and Art. I don't want to prejudge it. I'm not a media news official that are reviewing this. But I would bet a person, I would bet that this is Mr. Art. And so we're able to do that and still do our regular work. There's still going to take place. You may not see it in the news, you may not see it on TV, maybe it's on the radio, but anything else to be, other things are getting involved. The committee, Intelligence Committee, thus it's constitutional duty of Congress. We've got, we were able to walk and shoot down here through the Senate. So that's kind of what's happening in Washington.
So you were going to do, I'm trying to write this question down, but it's intimate enough and just a limited question. But before we get started, I actually want to say some of the things every single town hall, one of the number one topics is public safety and trap. So I'm very proud and honored that we have Lieutenant Mike Nigley here from the Department of Defense. As well as John Riley, head of the Napa Central Labor Council as well. So without further ado, I'm going to take questions. Right here and then yourself.
I don't understand why doesn't a dereliction of duty for the Senate to sit on the bill for the Congress and the House this thing? I don't understand how it could not pass anything. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And I guess the larger question is, why isn't this reported more in the media? Why is it focused on that rather than the daily shenanigans from this administration?
The question is, why isn't it some sort of dereliction of duty that McConnell will not take up the bills that the House has passed? And why isn't the media focusing on that rather than everything else? Starting at the back end, I think we all know that, first of all, there's two types of media. You know, there's the shows that we all watch. And we talked about this with the students today. You know, we're pretty tribal across the country when it comes to politics. And you can see that in the shows, not the news, the shows. And don't for a minute think that they're anything other than that. You know, they're there and they have an agenda. And they're talking about their particular issues with their particular spin on it. And that is what's exciting to people. People want to see that, people want to hear that. And the fact is, anytime there's anything major like this happening, it does tend to suck the oxygen out of it, no question about that. So I think that's just natural. Just don't let yourself fall into that trap, you know. Get down on the weeds, figure this stuff out, you know, read the papers. Your papers aren't going to talk. They're not a talking chair in this situation. You know, they're trying to report it on the news. There may be some biases in there, but you're all smart enough to figure out what those are. As far as a dereliction of duty, I think it is. I think it's a trojan's way he's doing. There is not one of those issues that, it's equal pay, it's equal work, whatever it is that we've passed, not one of those is insignificant. It's all important stuff. And even the things that you might say are insignificant are important to some. And he has, I believe, what you need to do there. Now, the way it works is, every member of Congress is elected by his or her constituents. If it's a House member, it's folks within that congressional district. If it's a Senator, it's folks within that state. And so you go for your term of office, be it two years in the House or six years in the Senate. And the only thing that you, the only part of your job description is, you just got elected. You can move, go do your job. And if you don't, you have to come back and stand for election. I am hopeful that two things happen in the Senate. One, I'm hopeful that Mitch McConnell's constituents, the people in the state of Kentucky, say, "You did your job. You were derelict in your, in your job duties." And that he faces that in his election. I'm also hopeful that between now and then, that the Republican senators who elected him leader are hearing from their constituents that they want stuff done. And one of the things on identifying this legislation that we've been doing is trying to figure out how to identify pressure points that would get McConnell to bring this up. And I've been, I've had town hall meetings in different states across the country where there is a US Senator, Republican US Senator, who will maybe feel the pressure and go back to Washington and say, "Hey, you know, my constituents are telling me we need to get this again. They're not going to reelect me." And if that happens, you're not going to be the Senate leader anymore. So you know, we're trying that. Every week, we have groups in, we do anything from a round table to a press conference with different groups who are gun violence prevention representatives. We've got cops in, we have all the major police groups coming in. It is a big deal. You know, there's been unregulated firearms on the street. Every time a cop gets on a uniform and goes outside, they've got to know that this is a danger. And that's why police organizations support this background check legislation. And one other day, with healthcare providers traumatized, the actual people who are putting patches on the holes in people's bodies. And having to tell parents that their child didn't make it because of the shooting. We've got students in. This is, this gun violence stuff, especially the school shootings, has put a terrible toll on kids. And don't think it's just for there's a shooting. You know, I have kids tell me, every time I'm home, that is my school, well, my school and the next school. Kids are traumatized. And it's not unlike the factor nine, 11. I had a mother call me, "Every time an airplane flies over, my kid runs in crime." It's the same sort of thing. I told the students that I met with today, I did a podcast with group teachers and school students in Washington. And it was one high school girl who told the story, it was chilling. She said that her cousin went to Parkland High School in Florida. And after that school shooting, her family went from their home in Virginia to Florida to deal with that family. And this day, a couple of days. And she said on the way back, all she could think about was how lucky I am that if it were my school in Virginia, nothing like this could happen. And the next week, this girl, a reporter, I got to the school and killed this girlfriend, two students in front of her in the same road in her classroom. This is, this is something that is a huge problem and it's got to stop. And it's not, there's no easy answer. Background checks is not going to solve all the problems. They say, "Oh, you need to put more cops on the school plan." Yesterday, that kid killed himself, several students, and wounded one or two in 16 seconds. So you know, cops are good, but that's a, that's a quick response, you know, to be that quick. So these are big issues that we need to take on and we need to be able to address. And as I said, there's not one bill that's going to fix them. And here's something that I didn't tell you guys this, but here's the one takeaway for, especially for the students. There's no, there are no one bill fixes for anything. So if we identify a problem today and we say, "Okay, we're going to fix it. We fight the solution for that." And we take it to our team and say, "Introduce this to, pass a resolution in the City Council." Or we take it to Aaron Hannigan and say, "Take this to the Board of Supervisors and introduce this and pass a resolution." Or they say, "Take it to Washington, write a bill and pass it." Well, if we do all that, we do, if we pass that perfect solution, it's only a perfect solution then. The minute, the minute that's signed into law, the minute that final vote is taken and the gavel goes down, you better start right away figuring out what we do next. Because there's everything from unintended consequences to the next generation of whatever that problem is, or retirement care. So if we don't solve problems, we address problems.
Thanks, Congressman. We're trying to keep the answers a little short, we want to say as many as possible. So yes, Brandon?
Hi, I'm here representing Legacy in Sedona. And I want to thank you for having meetings with management and our local tenants. I no longer live there, I graduated out and I know a much better place. But I still, my heart is still with the people in Legacy. And again, the work is not done because they still, the bullying and stuff that I've seen in that building, there's no excuse for that happening. To the seniors, who are, many of them totally defenseless. They really don't have the skills to protect themselves. Some of them are damaged one way or another and they just don't have it. So those of us that can, you speak up. But I do know that the meetings that you've had with management have made a huge difference. They would not believe us about the one secretary and how awful she's been to tenants. And I'm the person that they do not want you to have in the meetings. Management's refused to come if they didn't get it. Just so you know, I'm that way. And I have plenty of proof that they lie on a regular basis. They actually wrote three letters from their lawyer being about things that I've done that are wrong. Because I stand up for the people in the building. Just wanted you to know that we really appreciate what you've done.
Thanks. Thank you.
And you too, Mark. You and I know, you've been on our side all the way along.
Thank you. And one thing I would say to that is, our low income seniors and seniors who are living in Legacy downtown area is something that's very important to me. I've heard stories about some things that Congressman Thompson dealt with. And then me seeing it myself, I got angry as well. And I think that we have to just continue. I love what Mr. Posey does. We have to always have tenant associations so the seniors are gathering, have a place to talk, hash out the information, you know. And those quarterly meetings, I think, are important. For me, just being able to listen to what you guys are dealing with was really a wake up call. Because at times, that place is like a prison. And you're right, you have to constantly keep working at it, constantly keep making sure that they're being held accountable. So thank you all. So, yeah, next question?
Perfect segue into why I came to this meeting. Nice to see you, Congressman.
Good to see you flying colors.
Yeah, really. So I'm concerned with the number of homeless seniors in Vallejo. I read recently that almost 50% of the seniors in this country are 60 and older. And in Vallejo, the number, I'm certainly sure that it's not 50% of our homeless, but it is a large number. And people, we see people every day with wheelchairs and walkers standing in these, you know, the driveways of supermarkets with signs that say, you know, "Can you spare a dollar?" or whatever. I think we as a country need to hang our heads in shame every time we see a senior out there begging. You know, we're the folks who created this community. And we're the folks who, a lot of people stand on our shoulders. And I want to know what is going to be done to curb the increasingly large numbers of seniors in Vallejo and in Solano County and in Napa as well.
Thank you. Let me say it's not just Napa, Vallejo, it's everywhere.
And of course.
The number of homeless people across our country is a lot. I think there needs to be done. And on the good news side of it, I want you to know, when we had the student council today, the first question they asked me was, "What can we do to improve this situation?" So good news side, the younger generation, the community that cares about this. And that's good for us in the future. I think there's a lot to be done ahead of us of it. And it's everything from increasing section eight vouchers to increasing the number of affordable housing units that we can make. Anything at all we can do to expand the inventory is important. Anything we can do to help people get in those homes are important. And I would be remiss if I didn't say, we need to spend, and it doesn't sound connected, but it very much is, we need to spend a lot more time, attention, and money on mental health issues in this country. And a lot of the homelessness problem is a mental health problem. And things that you can also attribute to homelessness, road abuse, alcohol abuse, a lot of those are mental health issues. You can't get the help you need for mental health if you don't medicate. And pretty soon, you've got to come up with problems. So it is, it was a pretty encompassing issue that needs every level of government working on every aspect of it.
What about?
Then I do want to ask you, go ahead.
What about declaring a state of emergency in Solano County? Is that true?
Well, I haven't thought about that, but you know, something that could happen. And usually when you do a state of emergency, what it does is it draws attention to something and makes it, qualifies it for enhanced love and funding. I don't know if homelessness would follow that, but it's certainly something that could be.
And I think we can ask you questions. But I did, actually, as we're talking about federal, county, and state level, I did want to introduce Supervisor Aaron Hannigan.
While you're here, do you mind? I mean, because at this point, we can get answers faster from the city, county, and federal. So I did want to tell you vocally, for me, there are three things that we're going to do. The Navigation Center is going to be great. Because I don't like the location, I wish it was in a better location. But I am proud that we're going to actually have something that people can go to with the services that they need immediately, working with the county. That's mental health, that's drugs, that's housing, that's jobs. But that's not immediate, that's just a temporary fix. We also have something coming down behind that, which is more permanent housing. And I think it's very interesting looking at the easy housing model because they're not going to. I think the best time to build it, especially the City Council, people are like, "Well, they got to keep moving." No, they don't. These people are here to stay. Or they're sitting there and giving them 360 community service that they need. But I think more importantly, I'm very proud, I think, one of the best things that I've been on council this past year, a bill dealing with rent control and making sure that rents aren't soaring. I mean, seeing the Strawberry Hill, I know that had a lot of attention, but that was just microcosm of the entire situation we're dealing with. I can't say enough about how many seniors I've seen who've took rents to develop. I mean, at the Senior Center, I've had people telling, an 80-year-old senior saying, "My rent's done, I'm on a fixed income, how do I, how do I do anything about that?" So I think that as we address the housing issue, I think it was important to put a rent cap on there. But the one thing that we're going to have to do is we're going to have to hold our housing accountable for real housing. Not just condos, skywraps for the rich, but housing for working class families. Because ultimately, we can act with control. Unless we're building more housing, there's nothing that we're going to be able to do in the Bay Area. Thank you, great question.
Well, I would say, from the state perspective, our current governor has put aside way more money than has ever been allocated to address homelessness. Not just in Solano County, but in all of the counties around the state of California. And so that money is coming out to our counties, a lot of it is grant funding. I know the county itself, we made a conservative effort to partner with cities in our county that are actively addressing homelessness in terms of filling gaps. Low income housing is very expensive. A lot of times, that's done on grants, grant funding, whether it's state or federal grant funding or local grant funding. There are always gaps in that funding. And so the county is prepared to come in and fill those gaps when that's needed. There are a lot of issues, and not just homelessness. I think one of the bigger things that we're doing in the county that is with our YOCHI funding, is we have a safety net fund for people who find themselves in a position where they can't pay their rent for a month. You can come, you can get that money to pay your rent and stay housed. It's much more expensive to get you rehoused than it is to keep it in housing. And I agree, you know, we need to be careful of them more. And not only did this locally, did you pass that, but also the state funding. The governor also signed a bill to limit the housing. So the increases in rents, which is extremely important. I think one of the other statistics, and Congressman, maybe you can speak to that, and that is seniors not saving enough for their retirement. I think California is sort of anomaly in the cost of living here is just astronomical and it continues to rise, the cost of housing increases as people move from San Francisco with those big salaries in San Francisco and Alameda and Contra Cuesta County into Solano County, increasing the cost of housing for us here, which has always been an affordable part of the Bay Area, which is quickly becoming unaffordable. And what we're, what the statistics show is, folks who are getting ready to retire only have about $20,000 or $25,000 on average in their bank account. And they're relying on social security, a pension that may or may not exist for their retire, retirement. They may not have saved enough to pay for medical care, which is skyrocketing if their former employer doesn't cover medical care. And so, I mean, I think it's important to talk to the little guys and those who are not retired yet. Look at your plan for when you retire. Make sure you have enough money. Make sure you've got a plan that either to pay your house off or to, you know, move to a community that is much more affordable. I think you have to be really conscientious about what you have in your nest egg in order to help you survive in retirement in a healthy, balanced way and so you don't find yourself in a homeless situation. But for those that do, there are resources and they're here and they're coming and they're being put into place. Your announcement's on Tuesday.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think we're going to move this on that last topic. You're right about preparing for retirement and saving money. We've passed legislation, one of the five hundred bills, that is the Secure Act, that makes it a lot easier for people to have a pension, have retirement plans. And that is absolutely critical. And along the same lines is, your retirement's, it's often described as a three-legged stool. You have the money that you're able to save, all the work. Your retirement that you get from the job that you have. And everybody doesn't have that. Everybody doesn't have it, of course, too. And the third is social security. And social security is extremely important. And that's a program that is always under attack. You know, when, in the last Congress, when they passed that terribly responsible tax cut bill that costs $2.3 trillion. After it was passed, if you recall, Speaker Paul Wax, "We passed this big bill, this tax bill, and now we need to find some pay for us. And we need to cut these quote-unquote entitled programs to pay for this." So think about that. You take $2.3 trillion dollars from the American taxpayers, give it to the richest 1% of the people in the country, in corporations, and say, "We're going to cut entitled programs." Entitled programs, there are three of them. Debtors, benefits. Any debtors in here? Anything you earn is not an entitlement. It's an entitlement because you're entitled to it because you earned it. Medicare? Medicare, anybody on Medicare? And social security. That is an insurance policy that you and your employer paid them to, so that when you retire, you have funds and notes to live. And just happened to write this down, not knowing that you were going to talk about this, but...
It's a big topic, there's a lot to it.
But I think it's important to note that those entitlement checks that come into an area don't just benefit someone who's on Medicare, social security, or has veterans' benefits coming. It benefits the entire community. In Solano County, in our district, our fifth congressional district, we get seven point two five billion dollars every year in entitlement money that comes to our district. In Solano County, veterans' benefits, every year in Solano County, one hundred million dollars. Social security, every year in Solano County, seven hundred and seventy million dollars. And Medicare, three hundred and seventy-six billion dollars every year that comes into our county. And it's important to people that are entitled to those checks because of that program, but it's also important to our entire community, because here's the deal, how many folks said they were on social security? Keep your hands up. Now, if you have, if you send your social security check to like an offshore accountant in the Cayman Islands, keep your hand up. My point was, if you're on social security in our district, you're not squirreling this money away in some, you know, getting accounts in someplace. That money is being spent right here at home. It multiplies across our community. The grocery store gets it, the electricity company gets it, the car dealer gets it, the gas station gets it, it pays for our cops who are here, it pays for our firefighters, it pays for our healthcare professionals. That is money that is spent across our community. And when anybody, when you hear anybody says we're going to reform the entitlement program, that means one thing, they're coming for your money, our money.
How many are veterans?
Thank you for your service. Please give them a round of applause.
Well, I was going to ask, could I follow on that? Do you have your D V two fourteen?
Yeah.
You know where they are, right? Everybody knows your discharge paperwork? Have you, at all, have you been to our veteran services office in the county? Are you getting all the benefits that you're entitled to as a veteran?
Obviously not, what could you do?
I know, exactly. Well, you mentioned veterans' benefits, and Ted Muntio is the gentleman who runs our veteran services office, and he actually wrote the book on all the resources and services that are available to veterans, and he's here in our county. He brings in the most money from the Veterans Administration of any county in California every single year. So, I suggest you get your D V two fourteen, you contact the veteran services office, and have a conversation with them about all the benefits you're entitled to. You may find some money somewhere that you're not getting where you need to be getting.
We had a veteran come into my San Jose office who'd been homeless ten years, living on the street. Somebody brought him in and said, you know, he's got problems that he needs help with that the Veterans Administration won't help him with, and that's why he's been ten years on the street. We got him hooked up through his veteran service, he had serious healthcare issues, got those taken care of, got him some counseling, got him all the services that he needed. Today, this was about four years ago, today, he has a job, he has a wife, and he owns his own home. So, we're going to take the next question, and we're going to, it's a lot of people, it's a unique situation, so we want to give you all the chance to speak, so we'll try to keep, we'd like to get comprehension for that, so we're going to try to keep our answers down to a lot of them. So, we'll take the next question. Yes, sir.
My name is Harris Foley, I live in Lake City, by Canoma. My attitude is with the gun, particularly the ones that they're using military weapons to harm our kids and our police. Okay, I think we need to make that a high priority and make a shift toward the collection of military weapons, simply because there is no constitutional right to possess a military-type weapon that's really making it hard for our kids. I mean, I can't even imagine our kids getting shot with that type of weapon, you know, let alone military people getting shot with AK-47s and fully automatic weapons. So, our policemen are having a hard time with it as well. So, we have to make a move, we have to make a conscious decision to take responsibility to make this happen, one way or another, because eventually, it's going to get to that point that there are going to be more people have to die in order to get this. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give it a shot. Here's the deal, seven years I've been working on background check bill. This year, finally got it into the Senate, and they won't take it up. Background check. I said over ninety percent of the people support that. When the polling company that did the poll talked to me, they said, okay, we're going to tell you how many people support this, but you can't tell people, because it's so high they won't believe you. They said their polling found that ninety-seven percent of Americans believe we should expand the background check to transfer all firearms. It's like eighty-two percent of NRA members believe this. Can't get background checks passed. Now, there is no way that we're going to be able to get ban on military-type assault weapons passed. I had dinner with President Clinton, and he was, twenty-five years ago, he signed into law a prohibition on assault weapons. And we were talking about history of that and what happened. I think there was fifteen, fifteen House members lost their seat because of it. Tom Ridge, former governor, Republican governor of Pennsylvania, was in the House, and he was at this dinner. And now, he spoke, and he talked about how he had a one-hundred percent record with the NRA. He voted for that crime bill that banned assault weapons. The NRA, he was running for governor at the time, they withdrew his support and spent a boatload of money on his opponent. He said, I want, he said, I just want you to know that had I lost because of my vote, I'd have been perfectly content with that. So, it takes some guts to stand up to these guys, and you're starting to get that now. We have, you know, my bill on background checks, I had a Republican co-author, I had Republicans vocal, it's a bipartisan bill. So, we're starting to get people feel more comfortable dealing with this. It's data-driven, it's data-driven. Every day, seventy people who are prohibited from buying guns are stopped from buying guns because of the background checks that we have now. This is pretty easy stuff. And once you start, but we can't get the easy stuff. So, once you ratchet it up to assault weapons, you start actually taking guns away from people, it becomes a whole different story and an impossible situation at this time. And remember, the Constitution does protect your right on AK-47 or AR-15. The Constitution says that, and it was just affirmed by the Supreme Court in a stellar decision, that individuals have a right to own firearms. Now, the good news is, the opinion also stated that the government has a right to regulate that ownership of firearms. And that's our window where we're hopefully going to be able to get through. And I think, and I'm not, I'm a veteran, but I'm a combat veteran, I was incremented in Vietnam, I carried an M60, and I was wounded over there, I get it. I don't think there's any reason or any, there's no reason we have to have military-type firearms in our, on our streets. And I'm there a hundred percent. But when you start to try and remove them, it becomes difficult. I think the bill in Congress that stands the best chance of passing regarding assault weapons is a bill that would reclassify them and reclassify the background check system that you have to go through to get them, put them in the same category that you, that machine gun them. And you go through a higher background check, you pay a higher fee, and I think that probably is something that eventually in our lifetime, we'll see, we'll see pass. That's just kind of the reality.
And I just wanted to add, Mr. Foley, I think, I don't know if you're on Facebook, but we actually put out the web, Police Department puts out statistics now, and I think they're very interesting. We get them, and we ask that they put it out there, and the L.A.'s gun violence and murders are sixty-three percent. And that's something that gets lost in the sauce, that people aren't talking about, political insiders aren't talking about it, and we can't just do it by ourselves at the city level. So, I'm glad that Congressman Thompson championed that, because we are going to need help when it comes to removing guns from our streets. So, thank you.
And assault weapons are two percent of the crimes caused in that state. So, that's why the background check issue is the one that all the experts say will do the most justice. Thank you. So, next question.
My name is Carla Jewell, and I'd like to make two comments. One to the gun issue. I would like to challenge you and your fellow representatives and senators to staunch some of the arguments perhaps with a lot of, as a gun owner, I hear a lot of other people saying, I'm concerned about the government having information on me. History says when the stuff hits the fan, they use that against the citizens. Squash some of those arguments with the different type of bills that will keep those informations away from other government agencies.
My legislation specifically states that nothing in this legislation can be used to create any type of registry, and it's...
Because that's a big concern.
Oh, but it's not a real concern. It's malarkey, it doesn't, it doesn't do that. And, you know, even in California, you know, where you have to register many of your firearms in California, and there's a good side of that, I believe. They have a program in California called Armored Prohibited, where they can take the list of people who own assault weapons, because they have to be registered, and they can juxtapose that against the list of prohibited gun owners. And so, if you show up, and there's a, there's a big number, it's like a hundred, a hundred thousand or something, don't call it a number, there's a big number of people who are registered owners of assault weapons and also on the prohibited list. So, what that means is somebody legally bought an assault weapon and then later became prohibited, and when they are able to juxtapose this Armored Prohibited program, they can come out to your house and say, hey, you're a prohibited homeowner in the firearm, or our records show you own one. So, here's what we can do. We can work with you to dispose of it, sell it, transfer it to a family member who doesn't live here, or we're coming out for you. And so, that, it does have some, you know, some value. But the idea that the government is somehow going to scoop down and take everybody's guns is as stupid as the argument that I have to have an AR-15 to protect myself from the government.
Well, I'll make this comment, I wanted to talk about another subject, was here in California, there's been bills passed that, so you're my neighbor, and you think, I might be disturbed. It takes an anonymous phone call to say, I think Carla, I think you need to check on Carla and take her weapons away. They can come in and take my weapons without any due process, and I am guilty basically before I'm in this.
Well, they have a red flag law in California.
And that's the concern on the national level.
They have a red flag law in California that if someone, if I call Mike and say, hey, Hakeem is out in the backyard with his gun on a fray, you know, he's a threatening man, they can come over and check it, and with due process can remove that firearm to like a temporary restraining order. There's not a federal law like that, there's a few states that have it. There's an attempt to do a federal red flag law that would, that would be able to, that would allow law enforcement to remove guns in a terrible situation. Thank you. So, you want to take the next question? Yeah, I'm trying to hear a topic. Do you have a question? Do you like this question?
So, we keep hearing the term affordable housing, and let me just preface this, my wife bought a home in the border sixteen years ago. I was making about half the money that I'm currently making now. We could afford a home sixteen years ago. Today, I was in a poor spot, but the exact same home in Vallejo. So, my question is, when you use the term affordable housing, affordable for whom? And for how long? So, you, and I'm not trying to put you on this topic, really. Affordable for whom? I mean, do I have to make a high such figure salary for it to be affordable? Or can I make a low such figure salary? Or a by-figure salary?
And it depends where you are, right? Santa Clara, imagine being in Santa Clara.
Well, you're worse than Marin, so when they consider the average affordable home, I mean, we could afford a third of a house.
Oh, we could afford a garage.
Okay, yeah. But I think that's a very good point as to, you know, we look at the younger generations, even our nieces, our nephews, and things of that sort, and we're concerned about their ability to own a home someday, because if we couldn't afford to buy our own home again sixteen years later, what's going to be affordable for these kids? You know, in addition to the huge debt they are in bear of their education that was supposed to give them this opportunity we're speaking about.
I could not buy my house that I live in in St. Helena that I've owned for forty years. I could not buy that on my salary as a member of Congress with my wife as a full-time nurse. We could not qualify. We could, we could not live, we could not buy a house and live in my hometown of St. Helena. And then, but there's two issues that you talked about, and you also talked about salaries not going up. You know, we hear a lot right now about how great the stock market is and how great the economy's going up. How many, how many of y'all heard about how great our salary increases have been? Because the national statistics don't back it up. Salaries are not going up. Everything else is, the price of an automobile is going up, the price of housing is going up, the price of clothing is going up, but salaries are not, are not keeping pace.
So, for me, I think that what affordable housing is really going to change, I don't think that long-term it's just going to be a single-family home. I think that long-term, we're going to have to build multifamily housing, and I think that's going to be the norm, even in residential areas. You know, the days of us just having these huge tracts of single-family homes, I think are over, especially in the Bay Area. We have to build up. I mean, that's what we're looking at on Mary Island is, I don't want to see any more single-family homes. It's going to have to build up. That's what to me in affordable housing is, where people are going to be living closer together, but we're going to have a bigger housing market, in my opinion.
Well, I want to tell you, in Solano County, sixty-four percent of our working population travels outside of Solano County for their job. So, we've always been kind of a bedroom community, the statistic bear app, that that's what we are, and we are going to have challenges bringing in some of these high-dollar jobs that they're going to, less than hospitals, because we've got plenty of those here in Solano County, because of our education system. Companies like Google and Amazon and Salesforce and all of those that, you know, we'd love to have land on Mary Island, the fairgrounds property, wherever, somewhere in Solano County, they would only come here if they knew our test scores and they knew our graduation rates, not just in Vallejo, but in Fairfield and Baccano, where at a much higher level. What you get in communities like Santa Clara, San Jose, even in San Francisco, where there are that many kids actually living there and going to school there, is you get a concentration of people who are, they're engineers, they're parents, they're engineers, they're financiers, they've got these big-dollar jobs, they're very smart, they come from good colleges, and they lay that out on their kids, and the kids perform just as well in school, and that's a requirement they have about where they move. I know that, you know, that's a requirement that a lot of parents have, whether it's school system or like Marley. And so, we have that challenge here. But when you talk about affordable housing, I also talk about workforce housing. You know, the thing with Marin County is the people who work at the grocery stores, the people who work at Starbucks, the people who clean houses, they live here, and they're commuting an hour and a half across Highway Thirty-Six to get to the job there, and those are low-wage jobs. And probably even their teachers, you know, all of them, they can't even live in their communities. So, there's a true housing-to-job imbalance throughout our entire Bay Area. We live in a very unique situation, and I don't, I don't know how it changes. I mean, I think we're all trying to, you know, bring in more affordable housing, workforce housing, tie it to public transportation, so connect it to a ferry, connect it to a bus train, connect it to some kind of multi-local transportation, so people can, one, live in that high rise. And there's also that millennial issue of, you know, they don't necessarily want to own a home, they want to have some flexibility, and they don't want to have a lot of stuff because they get, they want to have some flexibility. They don't want to own a car, so they don't want to be close to public transit. So, there's all these trends that are happening, and we're just now catching up. Why? Because we're Solano County, we are the one that receives all the folks who are now no longer able to afford who they were to come here, and now... And now are on the road going back to where they lived, to the job that they can't leave because it's what's allowing them to buy a home. In the Grove on Mare Island, you know, on some of these other expensive neighborhoods.
For as long as I can remember, I left my house in St. Helena, I lived there forty-five minutes from home. I've lived there about an hour and fifteen minutes. And it's because of all of these problems. You can't afford to buy a house in St. Helena. But we still have restaurants, people work there. We still have retail stores, people work there. We still have house cleaning, yard, our stuff, contractors. They're coming through some of us. And our roads are absolutely happening. It's terrible. The whole neighborhood, it's terrible for your life.
Life, yeah. Spending hours on the road.
All the time in the car.
Not with your family, not doing what you want to be doing. And I think to that, what I'm finding is restaurants are closing. They're closing because they can't hire people. Because people have to come from so far and they can't afford the commute to get there.
So, we'll take the next question.
Yeah, maybe we could explore embracing the incentives for one, buyback, the benefit. How about that?
There's legislation to do that. I looked at doing a tax credit for buyback. Somebody actually has a bill to do a voluntary buyback. If that's, is it, is the legislation.
When you got a lot of people that don't have cash.
Yeah, yeah.
They don't have a car.
But tax is my jurisdiction. I'm a local community chairman and I chair the Assembly of Councilmen. And so I had a way to not only come up with an idea to deal with it, but because I chair it, maybe I could get it out of my committee. I was thinking from that perspective. But yeah, that is something that's been talked about. Yeah, the main ones, you know, the buyback, and I think it has to be voluntary. I don't think, I don't think it's mandatory. And then the reclassification, in the other, under the other qualification, where it is more vigorous, I don't know.
Amy said you guys said, "What you do?" It's an issue that, coming from a community of great diversity, concerns me. I see extremely, especially on a federal level, the division because of the parties has separated, become almost a race issue because of the, particularly the immigration issue. I'm going to challenge you as my representative to go back there and stop talking about people coming in as immigrants, we're built as a nation as immigrants, but instead on the employers that are hiring illegals, probably not paying them a living wage, maybe even human trafficking them, causing all these other problems to cross and causing these people to come to our nation illegally. Instead of a visa program, a green card program like they had in World War II when there was a man shortage, they knew they needed people to do laboring jobs, they allowed these people to come in. Account for these people as humans. They're here, we wouldn't have a DACA issue, a DACA or whatever you can call, whatever you pronounce it. Just challenge it back to the employers that are using and abusing these people and not paying us the fair wages and everybody else.
There are situations where people are hiring people who are here illegally. And it comes down to the fact that they need workers. There's a terrible shortage and it's in different types of areas where in many places, people who are citizens won't do the work. So what the answer, in my view, the answer is comprehensive immigration reform and to do those. And you know the political problem with doing comprehensive immigration reform. It's not going to happen today. It's not going to happen when you have a one party that doesn't want it and a one party that does. So we've been trying to strike a balance by taking pieces of it. I know Zola Offrin right now has legislation that I think, two months ago I would have said absolutely it's going to pass the House. And then it blew up. And I think it still passes, but deals with agricultural workers, that's an important one. I have a piece of legislation that deals with US military folks and their families who are not citizens, would just expedite the process for them. And, you know, I don't think that was going to move at all. You know why I think that? Because until two months ago, so we went back into session in January, so up until two months ago, it took me that long to get a Republican go offer. Just no bipartisan sport. I've got one go offer.
So does it take people calling, writing to, does it take people to call our senators and put pressure on these Republicans even though they don't represent us?
Absolutely. I think it's really important that we have, you know, we have the ground roots, grassroots movement for the extent. But as you point out, it's really tough. I don't, my computer system, I don't get constituent mail from someone who's not in the cover that I represent. And we probably get three thousand letters a week. If I open the zip code block, I'd probably get sixty million a week. And there's just no way you can keep up with it. And I can barely keep up with responding to the people that...
Well, I'm glad to hear that you're doing it, even if it is piecemeal. It has to be addressed.
I agree.
I mean, it's the elephant in the room.
So, you want to take the next question? Somebody's playing my song. I'm not willing to take that one.
So, I'm one of these folks who was recruited to come out of retirement. And I'm very blessed that I was because I was not making it on social security. And I was recruited to come out of retirement and am now working in Marin County. And I want to know, what is the plan for Highway Thirty-Six? For Highway Thirty-Six? I spend at least four hours of my day every day on Highway Thirty-Six. I've heard a lot of their books on tape as I'm going two miles an hour, but what is the plan for Highway Thirty-Six? And the whole plan about toll road, I really hope that's not a problem.
Well, you know, because I don't have a good answer. You know that the reason that you will never get in a head-on collision on that road is because when I was in the State Senate, I may have put that K-rail down.
Thank you. That's my barrier.
The Highway Thirty-Six should have been replaced decades ago. And it needs to be replaced with, allows water flow underneath, has adequate number of lanes. There was talk, very credible talk about doing the toll road expansion one direction, using the current road the other direction. And then once the toll road part paid for itself, or got close to it, then they would put in the second section. The problem's exacerbated by the fact that, Aaron probably knows the specifics, but I think it's five places on Highway Thirty-Six that are going to go underwater because of the rise in sea level because of climate change. So it's not something that we can continue to kick down the road. But the state and the local governments have been working on this tirelessly. I've been briefed two or three times on different iterations of what could, what should happen or could happen, or maybe what would happen. And where it is right now, I don't know.
I understand. You know, we actually have an implementation coming up for the Policy Committee, actually. When I was first elected to the Board of Supervisors in 2012, we had an interesting meeting. It was all the supervisors from Marin County, Sonoma County, Sonora County, and Napa County. And they asked each of us, "What were your number one issues in your district?" And I said, "Highway Thirty-Six." Now, this was in 2012. The unemployment rate was still very high. We didn't have a lot of traffic like we do today on the road with an unemployment rate of three point one percent. And they all looked at me like, "Oh, that's not a problem now. We shouldn't be worried about it." Well, here we are in 2019, and it is a problem. It is an hour, how long?
It took me an hour and a half to get to work.
Yeah.
And then it took me two hours to get there.
Right. Caltrans did not have Highway Thirty-Six on their list. It's actually a state route, Thirty-Six. And so, the four counties have gotten together, we've been meeting, it sounds like we haven't been doing much for two years, but we've actually been doing a lot. UC Davis happened to do a study in the environment, a study about Highway Thirty-Six about the same time that we started coming together and talking about what we need to do, who we need in the room, who needs to be at the table, what are some of the solutions, what are short-term solutions, what are long-term solutions, and what is it all going to cost? And then the flooding happened. And so, that added another dimension. So the section of Highway Thirty-Six from Mare Island to Sears Point is only one-way, right? It's two lanes.
Yes.
And then from there to Marin, it's four lanes, so two lanes each direction. Well, that's now flooding. When we were the primary, this section's called B, the section from Baleno to Sears Point. So there are some short-term solutions that are going to be put in place, turning circles, signal lights, it's all going to be a long, long haul. And that's the bad news. But the good news is there's going to be some short-term solutions that are going to be put in place in the next year and a half. And then there's long-term solutions, and that is addressing environmental, addressing the traffic concerns, addressing the time that it takes you to go from one side to the other, and that is having a raised causeway. Have you been on Highway Five, like between Woodland and the airport? Something very similar to that, that would allow the tidal flow, that would also allow for the birds and all the other species that are very native to that area.
Fish, major fish.
Fish as well, yeah. So, and that more than likely will be a toll road. It will be like a bridge. It will be the eighth bridge in the Bay Area. We are looking at solutions for low-income folks who will be driving across that bridge because we all know that the commute is from here going west in the morning and from west going east in the evening, not necessarily the people there that have all the money going in the opposite direction. And so, we're very cognizant of the cost of having a toll bridge and what that might mean for folks who might have a hard time paying for it. So, there's not a fast and easy solution.
I'm picking back from what she said. I was at the League of Cities meeting. The good news is, they are going to be widening their planning long-term about how to make it short, but it's just not going to happen anytime soon. So, it's going to be...
I heard the other day that it's going to be a six billion dollar price tag to fix the whole thing. So from Baleno to the Marin area.
And when I put the K-rails in, the reason that we did that was because it was too expensive to fix back then, it was two billion. So, we have about seventeen minutes, so we'll take the next one question.
Isaiah, I have a announcement and a question. So, I know you guys are speaking about homelessness, so me and some of my friends, we're doing a Thanksgiving drive at the Baleno House, you know, Sunday from two to four. So, you know, if you have some homeless people, if you know, they need some food, invite them to the house, food, and eat yourself. My question was more to you, but I'll kind of go through your all three. You said, you touched upon that some of the companies didn't want to come here to set a foundation for our schools, our test scores. I'm from Baleno, I'm a student here, I ended up working at Apple, you know, a silicon company. So, I want to know, what can we do to improve our schools or what's the long-term goal of the plan?
Well, I think Dr. Clark is tackling that issue. That is, you know, addressing inconsistencies and deficiencies in our school system. If you voted, I think it was last year, 2018, we had a bond measure on the ballot for the school system to bring them up to Twenty-First Century Code. So, they could have iPads in the schools, so, you know, they could be really trained for the jobs of the future. We're behind. We're behind a lot. Our investment, and I go all the way back to Prop Fifteen, in our school system has diminished. And the other thing is, in 2004, the Balenison Unified School District filed for bankruptcy and took out a sixty million dollar loan from the state of California. The students who are in our schools today are still paying for that sixty million dollar loan. The school district of the state of California, before they write their check to the school district for their annual money, they take out three point two million dollars to pay down that loan. Three point two million. Students who are today, who weren't here in 2004, are still paying for that loan. So, I know Dr. Clark is addressing that by looking at some of the excess property that we have. There are twenty thousand children who live in the school, the city, who could be attending our public school system, only half of them do. The other half are in charter schools, private schools, they're in, are you in our schools? Yeah, see, they're in District to District transfers, they're in Benicia, they're in American Canyon, they're in Fairfield. It all sort of like, it's this vicious cycle. And so, I think Dr. Clark is doing the right thing, and that is by consolidating schools, by selling excess property. Once you sell that excess property through a certain process that requires public input and recommendations to the board, and then you put it out for sale, it goes, you can take the proceeds of that sale and pay down that loan. But you have to go through this lengthy process before you can do that.
So I would say, from the city level, it's about forming partnerships with the school district. I think too long, this kind of been, they're doing their thing, we're doing our thing, and that's something that I've really fought for, is having that partnership with the school. We have a city school task force that was defunct, that we're bringing back, and that's going to bring, whether it's Rotary, Public Safety, county services, as well as parents and making sure everyone is at the table, and the city's investing in our kids. I think that that's very important. I mean, the schools may happen for eight hours, we have it for twenty-four. And that's what I told the city manager, he's bought into that. We now have a growing youth, a youth task force that's kind of an option, tier-one priority for the city, which is growing youth opportunities, making sure that we have a pipeline for those jobs, investing in our school programs. We're looking at moving back the Boys Club and things like that. And I think that it is getting everybody at the table and making sure we're all accountable. Because you're right, I think that the kids are the ones that really lose out. And the kids are very smart. I would say, as a councilman, my hardest town hall was right here in front of just secondary. Because they were asking questions about, "Why don't we have anything to do? What are you going to have to trash?" Which was very shocking because you hear adults saying, "The key is..." The key is that every school I go to, they say, "Why are adults littering so much?" You know, so I think that that's very important. And I'm hoping that those relationships that we're forming will pay off long-term for the left here. Yes, I mean, yes, sir.
Yeah, Sheldon, the why is Pugnus still in business?
So, I'll say, I don't know where anyone lives, it's very interesting because I grew up in East Baleno, my mom lives in East Baleno, I now live in Central Baleno. We had power out for five days. I mean, five days. And I don't think there's any, I think I'm the youngest person on my block. Every one on my block is over sixty-five. Most of them are on Facebook. Most of them, I had a neighbor come by and like would go to Facebook, I'll text him, you have a text, you know? And so I think that that's very important. I think looking at what PGA is doing, and I mean, sometimes we feel helpless. You know, five days without power for seniors, ridiculous.
In the middle of the city.
In the middle of the city.
Yeah.
And when I talk about the outskirts, right in the heart of the city, five days without power, there are seniors who have no contact whatsoever. You know, we have to go check on those people. So, I would love to hear, you know, from a federal level, state level, what can we do? Because it is, I mean, they have a monopoly and we don't seem like we're getting the services that we need. Everyone's paying their bills, you know, and yet, here we are. And it seems like we've been dealing with this for a very long time. And if this is the new normal, that's a problem. So, that's what I thought.
Well, it's a publicly traded company. I mean, let's remember that. They've got tax, or shareholders, who are looking for their return on their investment.
Let me try and give you an answer. The first thing is, you're right, it's a privately, it's a publicly-owned company. It is not a government entity, and their business is delivering power to people in California. I think they're doing a job that needs to be done much better than what they're doing now. There's been, in my view, too many years of neglect, not only on the part of the company, we know that's a fact, their equipment needs to be enhanced, their practices need to be enhanced. But there's also been neglect from the oversight responsibility of PGA. The CPUC, who has been given by the legislature the power to oversee these guys, I think have been a little too close to the company. And I don't think the legislature for decades really gave it a lot of attention. They set up the CPUC, they're supposed to be handling it, and there's never been problems. And there weren't problems, big problems like we're seeing today, until there were big problems like we're seeing today. And now, it's just a snowball project. It's coming, you know, five days without power, the part of my district in Lake County, eight days without power, thirty-degree weather outside. And, you know, and don't tell me what you should put on my blanket, because last week, when I flew back to DC on Tuesday, I got to my house and my heater was out. And I slept Tuesday night with no heat, with extra blankets, with socks on, with pajamas on. on and with a stocking cap on. And I'm not a senior's, I'm a young guy. Five to eight days without power and this was land, real air, that meant, that meant no heat, it meant no water, it meant no electricity. Now, my power was out seemingly for five days and that meant no lights. And you know, big deal. I went and bought some new flashlights and so I get up in the morning and heat the water on the stove because it's gas, make my coffee and wait for a good little light outside and shade with the flashlight and take a shower because it has water here. And it wasn't any big deal. But if you're out in the middle of the country where everything's electric, you've got no water, you've got nothing. So they need to do a much better job than what they're doing. They need to make investments in the, in the equipment they have, they need to certainly need to look at doing undergrounding where they can. They need to bring us up into the current century in regard to the delivery of power. Now, the other side of it is, I was very much involved when PG&E about six years ago, I guess, said, we need to come out and trim all these, all the brush back from the lines. You wouldn't believe how many phone calls I got in my office. And I went to two of the medians myself, my staff went to a bunch of them, but I was yelled at by constituents. They want to cut down these trees for these power lines or that's my view shed that they're messing with. Well, it was their view shed. And that meeting was in Sonoma County, it was in an area that burned in the 17 fires. So it was their view shed that they wanted to protect until there was a fire. And then it became a real huge problem. Now, these PSPSs, I don't like much, but the fact is, I'd rather have a PSPS than have another 2017 fire situation. My, I lost 7,000 homes in my congressional district. Now, this last fire that we just went through, nothing home now, there were only two spots that was in our district. It jumped over a little bit into Lake County, the winds changed and it blew it right back into Sonoma County. Not my fault, it's Sonoma. It jumped over into Napa County, the north end of Napa County, and they contained it. But in our district, we had over 100,000 constituents who were evacuated from their home. The business hit on this is immense. People had to shut down their businesses. I heard from a lady the other day who lost her entire business because of the time that they were evacuated and they had no power. They couldn't do was a salsa, hot sauce company, mom and pop type deal, just gone. So we need to have a better way to deliver power. And there's a whole bunch of different models that are being looked at and what it, how it ends up, I'm not really sure. Some folks want to do COOOPS and COOOPS work pretty well in the areas where they are and that might be the answer in some places. Selling off infrastructure to government, local governments may be the answer. San Francisco wanted to buy their infrastructure, but there's still the problem of how do you generate the power within that infrastructure bank? And it's PG&E that has the delivery of lines, getting it there. I think there needs to be a lot more investment in renewable energy. We need to be, we need renewable energy investment that does a whole bunch of things. Gives us renewable energy, gives us a more resilient energy grid that will protect us against things like this and deals with, addresses climate change and provides good jobs.
I'm sorry, just to piggyback on that, I agree with you. I think, you know, PG&E, they should still be in business. So you're saying that you support the people who run PG&E?
No, I didn't say that.
Yeah, he didn't say that. But look, I finished this quick, sir. But what I wanted to say is, there's been a lot of vocal point on PG&E, but I agree, climate change is something that we really have to take a look at. When I was Brandon's age, this time of year was gloomy, all till March, and then you might see the sun. Now, it's almost like summertime, we're having longer fire seasons, we can see that and the effect that it's having on our communities. So though PG&E has a lot to work on, I can just see myself as a citizen that climate change and how it's affecting our way of life, I think that that's huge. I'm sorry, this woman had it and then...
Clark, I was lucky to go into one of the senior buildings with a five-day blackout. Now, the big problem there is the way these things are designed. In order to get in and out of my building, I had to go down three flights of stairs and up three flights of stairs every, or two flights, I'm on the third floor. But the other part of it is, you know, that, there's got to be a plan. What about the people on oxygen? I'm, like you, I'm a young one, I'm doing very well for the age I am. But a lot of the people are on oxygen in those buildings, most of my neighbors in that building are over 80. They've been in there 20 years. And so lungs, moving in our hallways is extremely dangerous, you have the exit button.
So not to interrupt you, but we only have to 3:30, I apologize everyone, I know we, as prior said before, we had to move to 3:30, we had some time constraints. But I want to tell you that one of the things we have discussed at the city level, and I know Ms. Crawford has asked about it, is what is our plan for seniors? Because we have to have a better plan than what we have. And the city manager and staff understand that, they know that we have to do better. We have to have some type of way to mobilize and actually get out to seniors to make sure that they're protected in these communities. And that's something we're looking at.
And if there's any way I can help you in regards to, PG&E has responsibility. They need to pay for and staff resource centers where people can stay warm or cool in the summertime. And no one should be put in a position where they're stranded on a floor where they needed an elevator. So that may be the installation of generators, it may be off-site resource center, whatever it may be. And if there's any way I can help the city, if that's a better plan, I want to...
I think it's multi-pronged. I also think you have to talk, you have to find out from the building owners. Where are the building owners? Where are the managers? One of our problems, and you might as well know, they just did an upgrade on our building to make it safer for us. And it's five times more dangerous because it had a nice sloped area with no steps, nothing. Now we have curbs everywhere, which means we've already had four people fall in the month as they've had the curb setup.
Yeah.
Because elderly people do not need curbs, we need flat surfaces. And whoever's putting in these, enforcing these codes, they're crazy. I can look at that, I'm an engineering background, my dad was an engineer and I worked in the field. But I look at that and I say, somebody looked at this and they're absolutely insane. They should not be designed like this.
And if you want to respond, we've got two minutes or two...
Yeah, so it's certainly from the county, we got a list, I was talking to Joyce, you know Joyce, about our response to the seniors who were in situations like yours. And they had called all the seniors that were on our list, that are our customers at the county. And it kept in touch with them to make sure that they're okay and if they needed things, we were providing things for them. What PG&E did is when the PSPS, the latest one, some of these towers were not included on the original list of going down. And PG&E went to Joyce and said, here's 9,000 other seniors you need to call. Well, these aren't 9,000 county seniors. And it was late at night and it was after all the employees went away. And so, you know, that really is going to take a multi-pronged approach with the county, the city, PG&E and the building owners and the property managers of the locations of where the seniors are living. I think that's, that's very key to this discussion is to be having, because they need to be, number one should be their clients, right?
Yep. I just wanted to let about that. They need to check the roof because this doesn't all make sense. No.
Okay. We'll take one more question and we have to get out of here because the school has to shut it down. So if you have a really quick question, sir?
I just had a question. Since California legalized cannabis and Vallejo has been collecting tax for many years on cannabis, what do they do with that tax? So...
A quick answer, it goes into the general fund. That's where the money goes. And the two things that I want to point out is, as a dispensary owner locally, we, the one regret that we have is when we did do that ordinance, if it were, if we could do it again, we would want to see the money go directly to Public Safety and then...
Right.
I mean, that's something that we regret because right now it goes to the general fund and the city has gotten used to, now they depend on it, but it just disappears into a fund. We would have liked to have seen it go directly to where the city of Vallejo needs it. Now, what I would say as a council member is, we as a city, too often for me, I think the city has been run kind of like a country store. We're not a country store, this is a business. We need to be able to adjust taxes to make sure that our businesses are competitive so that they can bring in revenue. We've seen the cannabis revenue dip in a major way and it was just strictly based on taking your foot off the gas and not paying attention to what's going on around. And that is insane because it cost us a lot of money and you can see the amount of money it costs. And that correctly affects our citizens because though we're not in the business of making money, we're in the business of taking care of you all. So with that, I do want to close, I want to thank you all for coming out. It's been a huge honor to do another town hall in my local part of town. I also want to thank Congressman Thompson.